Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the May 11th, 2020 Regular School Board Meeting of the Columbia Heights Public Schools. We're very glad you can join us today. Thanks for all the people who are joining us for the meeting, and thanks for people who are watching from home. We're really glad you can participate in this way. We'd like to begin the meeting by saying the Pledge of Allegiance. If you're able, please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I almost missed my chair there. That would have been very exciting on camera. Would have been one for the records. All right, Laura, if you would, please, would you do a roll call?
Mueller?
Here.
Lewis?
Here.
A Samurai?
Here.
Grandland?
Here.
Severson?
Here.
Palmer, here, and Superintendent Stenbik?
Here.
All right, that's all of us. Thank you, Laura. We will move on to our mission statement, which is creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong, all succeed. And our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. We'll move on first tonight by doing one of our favorite things that we seem to have a lot of lately is the Highlander Highlights. This is a time where the board can honor special achievements that are happening, especially among the students in our schools. And I want to start by giving congratulations to, let me look here, Dan Chao Li and Daphne Kleinschmidt. I'm going to read a little something here, and then I'm going to turn it on over to their program supervisor and teacher, Ms. Hannah Howe, from the Columbia Academy. So what I've been given here is this. National History Day in Minnesota is a competitive program for secondary students focusing on historical research and analysis about a topic of their choosing. Students must make a connection between their topic and the theme chosen by National History Day. This year's theme was Communication in History: The Key to Understanding. Students explain the historical significance of their topic while connecting it to that theme. Dan Chao Li and Daphne Kleinschmidt created a website about the Navajo Cold Talkers of World War II. In March, they competed virtually in the regional competition and qualified for state. After some time to make improvements on their website, the project was given to judges for the virtual state competition. And on May 2nd, the Minnesota State History Day Ceremony was held. Dan Chao and Daphne won first place for the junior division group website. They now will advance to the national competition, which will be held virtually from June 13th to the 19th. Chris Mason and Hannah Howe are their coaches. And I am going to turn it over to you, Ms. Chao, and if you could, say a little bit something about the students and the program.
Thank you. So Dan Chao and Daphne worked incredibly hard on their website this year, and this was their first time doing History Day. So not only did they make it all the way to Nationals their first time doing it, but they did that during a pandemic when this was all done distance. And just outstanding work. They worked tirelessly on their website. Their bibliography is probably one of the best I've ever seen. It's nearly 15 pages worth of resources that they used. They used a lot of different strategies that we've covered in class to gather research and have been revising and editing their website for months. We started this project way back in the end of November. So they've been learning about the Cold Talkers for months now, and I'm just very impressed by their work, as is Mrs. Mason. Outstanding job this year.
Excellent. And I see that Daphne and, not Daniel, I'm sorry, and Daphne and Dan Chao are both here. Would you like to say anything?
At first, it was a really intimidating process to start with, and it feels like this whole big project, we had to research and create a website from it. But I think the hard work we put in was really rewarding to get to this point.
I wish you could see how big my face is. I'm smiling a lot. Daphne, I see you unmuted. Would you like to say something?
Yeah, I totally agree with what you said. It was so much research.
Hey, Daphne, I'm sorry. It's hard to hear you. Can you lean a little bit closer to your microphone?
It was really hard to get all our information, but I think it's totally paying off.
All right. Thank you so much for joining us today. I have these, and you'll get these. I'm sure we'll get them to you somehow. Here's yours, Daphne, and here's yours, Dan Chao. And these will come to you, just they say, in recognition of replacing first place in the Minnesota History Day competition. And thank you for representing the Columbia Heights School District. It's exciting. Board members, do you have anything you'd like to add? Lorian?
Yeah, I just want to commend you both. As a parent who has had children compete in History Day, I know how much work goes into that, and I'm just so impressed. And to Ms. Howe and Ms. Mason, who have supported these kids and have given them the opportunities and the encouragement and the, just everything that goes into that, just congratulations. This is a huge honor. I'm so very proud of you. Kind of gave me goosebumps as Natty was reading. This is a big deal, and you guys have done an exceptional job. You should be very proud of the work that you've done, and we're proud of you.
All right, Hala, I see you raised your hand on Board Book. Excellent example to the group.
Yes, I'm getting with the program. So everything Lorian said, and then some, you guys were really proud of you. You guys are amazing, and you really make us proud.
All right. Well, we thank you for joining us, and we, again, we're so proud of you. Thank you for representing our school so well and by putting such hard work into it. I love that you said it was a lot of hard work, Dan Chao, but it was worth it. That's can be life sometimes, and that's great to have that attitude when you're in middle school, because that's going to carry forward for a long way in your adult life. So congratulations to both of you, and I hope you guys win it all at Nationals. We're pulling for you.
That's right. You can do it.
You can do it. We believe in you. All right. If you've tuned in for this moment, and you're like, wow, I've always wondered what a board meeting was like, you can stay. But if you're like, gosh, I have much more important things to do, like my homework and stuff like that, if you bow out, we're not going to, we're not going to be upset. And I'm sure Ms. Howe has some, you know, papers to grade and other really important things. So thank you for joining us. We appreciate you both, all of you.
Thank you.
In a less exciting move, we're going to move on to the Agenda Approval Adjustments, Announcements, and Correspondence. And we will move by, or we'll begin by asking for an approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion for the approval of the agenda?
All moved.
Lorian? Second?
Second.
Was that Laura?
Yes.
All right. Any discussion? All right. Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote.
Mueller?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Samurai?
Aye.
Grandland?
Aye.
Severson?
Aye.
Palmer, aye.
All right, motion carries. Great. We'll move on to the announcements. Friday, or sorry, Friday, May 14th, this Friday, our school board will have a training via electronic means at 5:30. May 18th, Tuesday at 5:30, our school will have a school board work session here in the community room and via electronic means. May 25th, Tuesday at 7:00 PM, we have a regular school board meeting in the community room and via electronic means. And on June 8th, Tuesday at 8:00 PM, is another regular school board meeting in the community room here and also via electronic means. And then on June 10th is our last day of school for students. All right. We will move on to the correspondence. Superintendent Stenbik, do we have any correspondence tonight?
Madam Chair, there's no correspondence at this time.
All right, great. Move on to Communication to the Board, and we'll start with Citizens' Employee Representatives. And it says this. At any time, citizen, any citizen or employee may, not at this time, excuse me, any citizen or employee may briefly address the school board. The board will listen to the brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request that the administration follow up. The board will not take action at this meeting on requests presented at this time. And we don't see anyone present here at this time, so we'll move on to the Consent Agenda, which includes the Personnel Report, the School Board Minutes from April 13th and 27th, and the minutes from the April 20th Work Session. It also includes the Treasure Reports from January through March 2021. Can I get a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
So moved. Hala got it.
Okay, we'll give it to Hala. Second?
Second.
All right, Mary, you got that one? Any discussion on the Consent Agenda? All right, hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Mueller?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Samurai?
Aye.
Grandland?
Aye.
Severson?
Aye.
Palmer, aye.
All right. Motion carries. We'll move on to the Discussion Items, Reports and Information Items, and we'll start first with reports from members of the board. Laura, would you mind kicking us off?
Yep, I'd be happy to. I've been really enjoying the weather. I think that's been really nice. I think we can all agree on that one. But I did attend a couple of events with 916. The first one was the monthly board meeting. We had a great present, we had two really wonderful presentations, and some that were very long and involved. But I'm going to go off with the fun ones here. We had their planning for the P3 Conference, which was actually canceled last year due to COVID. This year, it is going to be all virtual, and it is, it is geared towards collaboration and presentation for other districts that are like 916. So it is considered, I guess you could say, regional to national. And I actually heard that there's actually going to be some international attendees in this virtual conference, so we're very excited about it. I think it's long overdue, especially with the complexities right now in special education, as far as support and programming and legal. You know, there's a, there's a whole web of networking that can be done through this conference. So that's going to be held in June, and it's all virtual, and attendees will actually have access to all of the presentations, even if they, they'll all be recorded and accessible for, I believe it's supposed to be for six months. So even if they only sign up for the five sessions, they can get all of them, which is very cool. The second one is, is we had, we had a good presentation on their English learners program. I was taking a look at some of the statistics, and the increase in English learners over at 916 went from some 20-some-odd students up to 145. So they're really looking at hiring more language teachers to be able to work in these different programs. Looks like it's they're off to a pretty good start, pretty good foundation. And I look forward to making sure that we're really, really doing the best for these, these students who have both high needs and some language, language issues that, you know, we can make sure that, that they're all, that they're, they're getting the education that they need. And then I also attended the 916 Foundation Board Meeting. The, the annual event for the 33rd Annual Golf Event is coming up at Indian Hills, and I believe tickets are available. And they've got, I think they're going to be doing box lunches rather than a sit-down dinner. Kind of brings the price down a little bit. There'll be some auction items and stuff. So if anybody likes golf, be sure and check it out over at the 916 Foundation. And I think that should wrap it up for the day. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Laura. Hala?
All right, well, it's hard to beat all that. We just had the Community Engagement Session, Mary and I, and it was good to hear from people and to hear their concerns. And Xena will be connecting with you later on about all the questions and things that were discussed.
All right. Thank you. We will go on to Mary.
Thank you. So we had the School Board Work Session. I was able to participate in Valley View Bingo, which was wonderful. And sort of, it's just a delightful time to see kids and families and teachers and engage with everybody in a different way. And it's, it's so much fun. The teachers are such good sports about everything, and the kids just, it was just delightful. Like Hala said, we had the Community Engagement Meeting, and there was a lot of really good information that we sort of got and questions. So yeah, like Hala said, we'll be following up. Brian was also a wonderful co-host on that, and truly appreciate him. Spoke with a lot of parents and students about changes that are happening in the district, including the updates about programming and sort of the outreach that the school has done regarding that, and how it's felt different this year in, sorry, in a positive way. And also just families sort of curious about what's happening, next steps at the high school. So, and these are things that obviously we'll be following up as a, as a board and as the district. And Xena, I will, Superintendent Stenbik, I'll be following up with you about that as well. So it's been a busy few weeks.
All right, awesome. Molly?
Hi, thank you. Honestly, it's been pretty quiet in my corner of the world. I've attended some track meets, had some informal conversations with some administrators and lots of you guys on the board, and also lots of parents. And that's about it. Thanks.
All right, thanks, Molly. Lorian?
All right. Well, since our last meeting, I finished my Phase 4 training through MSBA, so that's done. I was able to attend virtually some synchronized swimming meets. Really great to see the girls improve throughout the season. And just, again, thanks to our activity staff and everybody who makes attending meets virtually a reality. Enjoyed some very cold and some nice weather baseball games, so it's fun to see that. The, the baseball team won their first game of the season yesterday. So great win. It was exciting to see. They've really started to come together as a team. Had a conversation with Superintendent Stenbik and have had many conversations with parents and community members, and attended the chair meeting just prior to this.
All right, thank you. As for me, I've been able to attend the boys tennis and some softball games over the course of the last couple of weeks. On Friday, I was able to go to AMSD, the Association of Metropolitan School Districts. We have virtual meetings. Superintendent Stenbik was there. I saw your picture, as I'm sure you saw mine. And we heard a lot about federal funding. They talked through the federal funding, about Esser and gear, very similar to what we've already learned from Director Hennickens. It made me feel like we really had our act together. So well done, Director Hennickens and Superintendent Stenbik and the whole staff who has their finger on the pulse of what's happening. And they talked about the newest round of funding, and so I'm excited to hear more about that as dollars get allocated specifically, and we see where that happens for our school district. I was able to attend the career celebration, which was, it's always exciting. We had, I think, seven retirees. Am I right there?
I was thinking six.
Six? Six retirees, then, with a collective 100 years of service in, in the schools, in Columbia Heights schools. And so that was really exciting to celebrate them and hear them ring their bells. I wish we could do it in person, but we weren't able to do that. I went, and I attended the community and, and parent programming update session on Zoom last week. It was really well attended. Thankful for the district for their ability to do that and get that information out in a forward way. That was really great. Thank you for that. Had multiple conversations with Superintendent Stenbik, had lots of informal conversations with community members, and I attended the chair meeting just prior to this meeting. All right, that's the board members. Superintendent Stenbik?
Madam Chair, members of the board, I do have a lot of community outreach to report on. Last week, Director Bennett and I, along with Chair Severson, hosted a community meeting on instructional programs for our next school year. And as you stated, Chair Severson, it was very well attended. I've also been able to participate in three Spanish-speaking parent meetings that were hosted by our wonderful homeschool liaisons. And at all three meetings, questions about Summer Encore or our summer school came up. So I just wanted to quick take a moment and share here that registration for Summer Encore is now open. That information has been sent to families. But also, you can find the registration on our district website in, under the Community Education page on Encore. So I really encourage students to participate this summer. There are many great learning opportunities. The District Finance Committee met and gave input on the federal COVID relief funding. And the World's Best Workforce Meeting is coming up soon, and they will also provide input, input from the community on, on use of those funds. I had the chance to meet with two of our varsity coaches about our athletic programs. And I attended American Indian Parent Committee Meeting. So I'll, I'll take a moment to remind everyone that the Columbia Heights Public Schools Powwow will take place outside on the football field this year on May 22nd. And we're asking folks to pre-register because of COVID guidelines, and there's registration on our website. You can register at the door, though, too. And I had conversations with Chair Severson and Vice Chair Mueller. And so as I was thinking about all of the different, you know, opportunities for community engagement, one, it's amazing to do, to focus on things other than COVID. It's, you know, it's just a whole new world. It's great. But also just that engaging with the community is really integral to the work that we do here. And so I was just very thankful for the opportunity to connect with so many different groups. That's it.
All right. Thank you for that. We'll move on to Mini Adventure and Adventure Club Fees. So I'd like to welcome Director Stunkel, our Community Education and Communications Director.
Great. So Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Stenbik, I am here for my annual presentation about the need to keep increasing the fees for our Mini Adventures and Adventure Club program. And just a gentle reminder, of course, that the reason for needing to increase the fees is to keep up with the cost of the program, because this is a self-sustaining program. And our mission, Columbia Heights Public Schools, creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong, all succeed. This evening, you'll hear the core values of community, collaboration, and integrity. And before I move to the next slide, speaking of community, collaboration, and integrity, I just want to acknowledge the tremendous work that Jody Gadian, our Community Education Coordinator, who supervises, amongst other things, Adventure Club, and Tiffany Grams-Farkas, who supervises, amongst other things, Mini Adventures, and all of the Adventure Club and Mini Adventures staff, who over this year, during this COVID time, have made the adjustments necessary to be aligned with the guidelines and to keep everyone safe and learning. So I just really want to acknowledge and express my gratitude for their work. So on this next slide, Mini Adventures Child Care Program, you'll see that, you'll see the column with this current year's fees and the next year's fees. This is approximately a 2% increase, which is, I've worked with Director Hennickens, that this is a very conservative increase in fees. We try to keep our prices absolutely as low as possible, but we do have to be able to sustain the program based on the fees. So you'll see that adjustment, for example, that a five-day-a-week program this year is $290 for the week. It will go up by $6 with the next year. And you'll, you'll see those adjustments. I do want to mention that this past year, because of COVID and pods, we had been requiring families to commit to five days, so that the classroom was considered a pod for the whole week. We will be making those adjustments to loosen that up in terms of families being able to select the number of days as the guidance is changing. With Adventure Club, our daily rate this year is $20. That will be increasing by 50 cents a day, again, a 2% increase. And you'll see the other changes, the 23 to 23.50 for the drop-in care, the $45 to $46 for the school release days, and then the full summer day program going from $45 to $46. I wanted to just express a new opportunity. This is, this is fresh off the press, that for our families whose children are in Pre-K 4 in our three elementaries, Highland, North Park, and Valley View, if they need childcare only during that 2:20 to 6 o'clock time, so that's that Adventure Club time, this coming year, we are going to allow four-year-olds to be in the Adventure Club program with the kindergarten through fifth graders at their school site. So in the past, families have paid for the full Mini Adventures Day, though they might have also been enrolled in Pre-K 4. Some families only really needed the care for that late afternoon, and we wanted to accommodate the, the needs of families and to give them options. So this is a new option, starting this fall, and that, that the four-year-olds will be able to, if they only need the care during that Adventure Club time, they could enroll in Adventure Club if they wish. Some families might say, I still want my four-year-old in Mini Adventures, and they can certainly enroll in Mini Adventures. They have options now. It's the same time, the same days, the same rate as the Adventure Club for K through Grade 5. They, during the school day, they may attend the non-school day Adventure Club program. But if the following summer they need the care, then they would enroll in Mini Adventures, which is really, really tailored for that age group. And then the other change is that the families are still available to access the CCAP, so the Child Care Aware, the Child Care Funding. But the Pathways Scholarships that Mini Adventures families have access to, that's not available for families if their four-year-old is enrolled in Adventure Club, because our Adventure Club program is not a parent-aware program. Parent Aware is only for that preschool age. So that is just, these are a couple of key points that I just wanted to make sure was clear to, to everybody. But of course, if a family needs childcare before the afternoon Pre-K 4 program and after, they can always enroll in Mini Adventures, and they are all welcome, and that takes place at the Family Center. The fees, of course, include meals and snacks, field trips, when we can safely do those. Again, the curriculum and programs supervised by licensed teachers. And I already mentioned that Mini Adventures is four-star parent-aware. That's an indication of very high quality, a lot of games, arts, literacy, guided circle time, outdoor time, and special events. And then those fee assistant options that I was describing earlier. This is a governance issue. I will be back in two weeks for, for you to review this again and to make a decision if you approve this fee increase of 2%. And with that, I will stop sharing my screen, and if there are any questions.
Thank you so much, Director Stunkel. We are thankful, as you mentioned, for the staff. And I'm sure COVID and those littles is not an easy, easy task. I personally don't have any littles, but I've, I've viewed my friends with littles over the course of this time, and I, I think they're superheroes. So to deal with, what, 10 to 1 ratios must be crazy. All right. Any other board members besides me have comments on our superhero Mini Adventures programs and their fees?
Looking. I realized I should have said, people can still enroll.
Yep.
So just a precious few days left to enroll in Summer Adventure Club. And so I just want to encourage everyone to do that.
And where would they go? Is that, is it easy to find on the website?
Very easy to find on our website. And Superintendent Stenbik mentioned that Community Education page on, on our website, and there's a lot there. And so people can just register there online, or they can also call at our front desk. We are staffed at our front desk from 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM. All are welcome. Great program.
I see Mary has raised her hand.
I did. Thank you so much. I'm glad for this update. And I think it's important for us to, we have to be able to provide care for families and for our scholars. And also, we want to be responsible and provide, you know, equitable wages for the people that are doing this really hard work, because as somebody who has a as somebody who has a smaller ratio in a classroom, I can tell you, it's not always easy. So I truly appreciate all of the work that you do. And again, I'm really grateful for this update because I have had families reach out to me recently asking, you know, are we going to have summer Adventure Club? Like, what are we going to do this summer? And I know that they're going to be really excited to, to know that things are, are moving forward with that, too. So thank you so much for all of the work that you and your team are doing with us.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? All right. We'll see you back here at our next meeting. Thank you for presenting tonight. We will move on to, hold on, I have to click for those following on Board Book. We'll move on to our district-wide radon testing results. And I'd like to welcome our Director of Finance and Operations, Brian Hennigens, and our Manager of Operation, Alex Nguyen.
Thank you, Chair Severson, members of the Board, and Superintendent Stenbik. Again, this evening, we have an update on our district-wide radon testing. And I have our Buildings and Grounds Manager, Alex Nguyen, with me to present. First, I'm going to share my screen. And we'll start with our mission, Columbia Heights Public Schools, creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed. And our core value is focus of collaboration and integrity. This evening, this is not a governance question. It's just an informational update. And I'll let Alex go through the presentation from here.
Thank you, Director Hennigens. So just to give background, we did radon testing back in 2019, district-wide. The reason for this testing is due to the bond referendum. And we're luckily able to have those additions at the high school in North Park. MDH recommends that we just do a follow-up testing. Just to, you know, because we're, it's a mineral in the ground, so just making sure we don't disturb anything. So again, it's just a follow-up testing that MDH recommends. So according to Minnesota Statute 123B.571, school districts that receive health and safety revenue to conduct radon testing must conduct the testing according to this radon testing plan. If short-term testing is chosen, testing must conduct on school days only, not holidays, vacations, or weekends between November 1st and March 31st. If long-term testing is chosen, testing must conduct in a manner where at least half of the testing duration includes days between November 1st and March 31st. Slide, please. So we work closely with the Institute for Environmental Assessment, or IEA, and they installed 225 radon detectors at North Park and the high school. They were installed on February 16th, and they were picked up on February 19th. So below, you can see 155 detectors were placed at the high school, and 70 detectors were placed at North Park Elementary. So they placed them in the basement or ground-level classrooms, just. Next slide, please. Thank you. So again, 225 detectors were installed at the high school and North Park, and none of the rooms came back that had radon levels higher than four Pico Kerry's per liter. So, which is great news. Because anything that would come back above four Pico Kerry leaders, we would have to do mitigation and then follow-up testing on that as well, until it was below that four threshold, so. And that concludes the presentation.
And I would just add real quick that there's been, there has been some chatter about radon testing. And there was a, an update to the rule, and that update was just about licensing and that the staff have to be licensed if we use health and safety dollars, that we need to be licensed in order to make those update, or in order to provide that radon testing. Our staff don't provide the radon testing. We bring in a company to do that. So we're appropriately licensed already. We've already been doing things. So we're already in compliance with the new rule. So I just wanted to make a point of that.
All right. Any questions from board members? Lorian has raised her hand.
Raised my hand. Just, if you can clarify, you tested the high school in North Park because of the recent construction. And did you, am I correct that you said that the other schools were tested previously? Or that they don't need to be tested?
That's correct. So every five years, we test. So because the district-wide was tested in 2019, we're not up for a retest quite yet.
Thank you for the clarification.
Yeah, thank you. Other questions? All right. Thank you so much for joining us tonight, guys. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
We're going to move on, we're going to move on to action items. Kids always make the appearance. We're going to move on to action items. And we are going to begin with the discontinuance or resolution of positions for 2021, 2022. And I'm going to begin by reading that resolution and then asking for a motion to move it forward. Resolution discontinuing and reducing positions due to enrollment and departmental efficiencies. Whereas the School Board of Independent School District 13 adopted a resolution on January 26, 2021, directing the administration to make recommendations for reductions in programs and positions. And whereas said recommendations have been received and considered by the school board, be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 13 as follows. The following positions or portions thereof be discontinued due to enrollment, program elimination, curricular changes, and departmental efficiencies. 4.2 FTE net license and non-licensed elementary positions, 2.61 FTE net Columbia Academy license and non-licensed positions, all teacher positions with tier-one licensure, tier-two licensure with an expiration of 63021, or out-of-field permission licensure by law need to be renewed, all teacher positions that were on a one-year contract, long-term substitute positions, and all positions cut for performance. The motion for the adoption of the following resolution was, oh, I don't need to read that because I don't have a, I don't have a motion or a second. Can I get a motion to move forward the resolution discontinuing and reducing positions due to enrollment and departmental efficiencies?
So moved, Hala.
Thanks, Hala. Second?
Second, Molly.
Molly, discussion on this? Oh, did you raise your hand here?
I didn't.
Oh, okay. Just kidding. Your actual hand. All right. Physical hands can be raised. Thanks, thanks, Florian.
Yep. I think, you know, just want to have a quick, as people are watching this, you know, we, the Board did ask the administration to find efficiencies. We have to right-size the program in the district. And, and that means that, you know, due to enrollment, as it says here in the resolution, and other factors, there are some changes in those positions, and some are required. And I think, I just want to, anybody who's impacted directly by this know that we obviously care very much about our teachers and our staff and, you know, making good decisions for, for the district, for the students, for the staff, and for the schools as we, as we move forward. I don't want this to, to just go without comment that we are doing this lightly. It's always a very challenging thing to do as a member of the Board. None of us look forward to doing this. But no, it's, it's the job that we have to do.
Laura, before I call on you, I see your digital hand raised there. Director Bennett, I want to apologize for not allowing you to do the intro. I got excited about reading the resolution. Can, do you have any, anything that you intended to share that I unfortunately bypassed you sharing?
Oh, forget it. You can keep going.
All right. Again, forgive me. Unintentional. We value you quite well, or at least we do in our hearts. All right. Laura, I saw your hand raised there.
Yeah, I kind of want to piggyback a little bit on what, what Lorian was, was saying. But, and also mention that this is a yearly process. We do this every single year. We, we ask the administration to make these very difficult choices in the best interest of our, of our students in our district. And that's, I just wanted to say that we do this every single year.
I would concur, and I would concur with what Lorian and Laura both said. Though we do this annually, we understand that there's real jobs and real human beings attached to these positions. And while we really will miss having those people in our family potentially. We're required by the state to have a balanced budget or to keep a balanced fund that will keep our school going. And it's a necessary, necessary function of keeping the schools open and offering these opportunities to kids. So it's tough, but necessary. Tough and necessary. Mary?
Yeah, I just wanted to also say, nobody runs for school board with the idea of looking forward to meetings like this where we have to talk about cutting positions. And I think I want to send a particular shout-out to Superintendent Stenbik and also to Director Bennett and your teams for making this year, I think, as I've heard from families and from staff, making this year feel like as good as it possibly could in this situation. Because as Nettie said, like these, and as Nettie, Lorian, and Laura all said, actually, these are, it's not just positions. These are chairs, chairs members of the team. We know that students and families are, are also going to be missing these people. And we know that these decisions are not made lightly. And it's, this is a hard time, I think, for us as well. And just want to, again, thank everybody for, for trying to make this as, like I said, as good as it possibly could under these circumstances. So your hard work has been noticed by, by families and staff and also by, by us. So thank you for that.
All right. Any other discussion? All right. Roll call vote, please, Laura.
Mueller?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Samurai?
Aye.
Grandland?
Aye.
Severson?
Aye.
Palmer, aye.
Motion carries. We'll move on to terminations of probationary teacher contracts, resolution, resolution number two. And this time, I will officially welcome Director Bennett to introduce this.
Chair Severson, members of the Board, Superintendent Stenbik. This is the second of two resolutions for the probationary teacher non-renewals. So we did one back in April, and this is the second group for non-renewals. So tonight, we're here seeking approval of this resolution.
All right. I will go ahead and read that resolution, and then we'll do a motion. Resolution to, resolution discontinuing and reducing positions due to enrollment and departmental efficiencies. Whereas the School Board of Independent School District Number 13 adopted a resolution on January 26, 2021, directing the administration to make recommendations for reduction in programs and positions. And whereas said recommendations have been received and considered by the school board, be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 13 as follows. I'm reading the wrong resolution. Thank you. Thanks for, thanks for, I was like, this sounds really familiar.
I was just about to stop you.
I'll get these resolutions right. I apologize. This is the resolution relating to the termination and non-renewal of the teaching contracts of probationary teachers. Whereas, the following persons are probationary teachers in Independent School District Number 13, see list below, be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 13 that pursuant to Minnesota Statute 1228.40 subdivision 5, the teacher contracts of those persons listed on page two of this resolution, probationary teachers in the Independent School District Number 13 are hereby terminated and not renewed at the close of the current 2020-2021 school year. Be it further resolved, that written notice be sent to said teachers regarding termination and non-renewal of his or her contract as provided by law. And that said notice shall be substantially in the following form. Notice of termination and non-renewal, Mr. and Mrs. Address to person. Dear Mr. and Mrs., you are hereby notified that at a regular school board meeting of Independent School District Number 13 held on May 11, 2021, a resolution was adopted to terminate your contract effective at the end of the current school year and to not renew your contract for the 2021-2022 school year. Said action of the school board is taken pursuant to Minnesota Statute 1228.40 subdivision 5. All right. That is the resolution. So resolution again relating to the termination and non-renewal of the teaching contracts and probation, of probationary teachers. Can I get a motion to move this forward?
So moved. Grandland?
Thanks. Mary, second?
Second, Palmer.
Laura, thank you. Discussion. Laura?
Ah, good. I was hoping you'd see that so I don't have to page through everything here. Just a clarification. All of the staff that are affected by this have already been notified, correct? Okay. Yeah, I knew you had, but nobody had said anything, so I just wanted to get that out there. All right. Thanks.
And just to be clear, Director Bennett, this is the second time we've passed this resolution because we've done this in two groupings. Can you explain that just a little bit more?
Yeah, so this year, we know, we get feedback from the teachers' union and administrators just that we, it's too late into May. So we did group it into two. So we had some cut early in the year. There were the long-term subs, if their license expired. We had some performance staff on there. And then we tried to hold on to as many as we could. And then the second one more reflects just we don't have positions for the staff.
All right. Thank you for that explanation. I see my notes from the previous motion in my board book, so I was able to compare. Other questions? Comments? I think the sentiment carries over from our last vote. This is not one of those things, as Mary said, that you get elected to the school board hoping you get to do, but it's a necessary function. I should say, and yet, it's a necessary function of being on a school board and keeping our schools running, so. Hearing no other discussion, we'll move for a roll call vote.
Mueller?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Samurai?
Aye.
Grandland?
Aye.
Severson?
Aye.
Palmer, aye.
Motion carries. We'll move on to board topics. Any members have board topics? I actually have one. Oops, sorry. I meant to stop my video while I disrupt my camera a little bit. I'm going to read the electronic notification just to, just to double check. I did not do this at the beginning, so just to make sure we're all on the up and up, I'm going to read this notice. Columbia Public Schools, general purpose for remote school board meetings. Due to the federal current state emergency declaration, the Minnesota Directive to residents to stay at home, the guidance about limiting person-to-person contact due to COVID-19 pandemic, this meeting of the Columbia Heights Public School Board is being conducted in accordance with Minnesota Statute is being conducted in accordance with Minnesota Statute 13D.021, telephone, meetings by telephone or other electronic means. School board members are reminded to do, to mute their microphones or phone when they are not speaking. Board members wishing to speak should raise their hand, either virtually or physically, and then wait to be recognized by the chair. The chair will determine the order in which board members wishing to speak will be recognized. When recognized, the board member should unmute microphone to speak and then mute their device. All votes will be conducted by roll call, and each board member should wait till their name is called before voting. This meeting is recorded. Also, access to the recording will be made available on the school district's website as soon as reasonably possible. Other board topics? All right. Hearing none. We will adjourn this meeting at 7:51 PM. Thank you all for joining.